Good evening. Thanks for joining us. I'll call to order this meeting of the Westford School Committee for Tuesday, March 26th, and this meeting is being recorded. If you're able to, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move on to consent agenda. So there are meeting minutes in the packet and to warrants details, I also forward it to your email, budget transfers and transfers, and status of general funds. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Nope.
Motion to approve. So moved?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? All right. Thank you. Okay. Public comment. A reminder that public comment for any item or topic on or off the agenda is always available near the top of agenda for individuals to share their thoughts. Speakers will be limited to two minutes per person. Please use public comment even if you refer to something later on the agenda. Virtual public comment is available through Zoom. Raise your hand and you'll be promoted to panelist or at the microphone in the room. Okay, great. Nothing. Move on to informational updates.
Okay. All right. So, one of the things I was going to share with you is that Principal Toomey has let me know what his timeline is that he's thinking about for that working group that we've talked about for the graduation requirements and looking at that. And so when, when we come back from April break, he's going to talk about it at the next school advisory council meeting that he's going to have with that group first, and then from there, look towards gathering volunteers to participate. So, that'll, it'll first happen, the first discussion will start at that meeting there to get their involvement. And then from there, he'll be establishing a working group with students, parents, faculty members, administration, and we'll begin that process. So this way people have an idea where that's going.
Does he have a, kind of an end date in mind of kind of roughly timeline?
What we've talked about is having, having the, whatever the recommendations and/or analysis being done for the fall before the budget cycle begins. So that's the goal. Yeah. But it, yeah, it wouldn't be until the beginning of next week.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So another thing I just wanted to point you towards is that in the packet this evening for informational purposes, we're going to have the draft of the statement of interest for the Abbott School. I told you that we needed to submit a statement of interest for the Abbott School as supporting documents for the Robinson project with the MSBA. So, we've gone through that whole process and I've, we've drafted the one for the Abbott. And at the next meeting, I'll be requesting that you vote to approve that I submit that. And that has to take place before April 12th. And it also has to go before the select board as well, too. So on the 8th, we have very specific language. That actual language is in there tonight, too, just for informational purposes, that they require that you use as your motion if you approve it. And there's a similar document that we'll give to the select board, so that the goal would be that we'd be, have it on their agenda for the 9th, which is their next meeting, that you'd have it on the 8th, they'd have it on the 9th. And then, if both groups approves it, then Valerie is the chair. You'll need to sign, I sign, and Town Manager Kristen Lastwood sign. And we have to do two different things. So I'll be submitting your email and you'll get an email link because we actually have to do it all electronically.
Oh, okay.
And then there's two. Chris did that last year when we were going through the Robinson piece. So we'll just need to make sure that we all are able to access those emails in a timely fashion because it needs to happen that week.
Sure.
But, and again, if we can, I'm just sharing with you tonight, so we can certainly talk more about it on the 8th if you have any questions or comments or concerns about what is in it.
And I was just going to add that my plan for that was because we've sort of shepherded the Robinson SOI through the process to just have that in the next meeting's consent agenda. But if you have concerns about that and would rather have something, a different process, let me know.
Okay. Thank you. Then the other thing that I had was that I actually had a couple people asking me questions about whether or not we were going to be getting eclipse glasses for students. And that's now a big thing that everybody's talking about right now because the news is now talking about it again, too. So it's now back on everybody's radar. And we are, actually. We, we found, we actually found a vendor that has AAS, which is the American Astronomical Society approved, and ISO, which I can't remember what that stands for. But it's another piece that these are, right? They're certified paper eclipse glasses that we're actually going to purchase for every single student, staff member, that on Monday at dismissal because the, the window of time is basically the afternoon. And so, you know, they're, you know, asking, we're basically going to, I do know at the elementary schools specifically, both Jennifer Cataldo and Julie Kelly, two STEM coordinators, have developed information that they've been sharing with all the teachers, to be sharing with all the students as well, too. And Joe Barnes is going to be talking with all the science teachers six through 12, making sure. I know a lot of them are just automatically talking about it anyway because of the authenticity of it and the, you know, that's not the right word. But, you know, just the fact that it's, you know, this event that's taking-
The relevance.
Thank you. And, and it's in some of the curriculum specifically, anyway. So we will now be able to send everybody with a paper eclipse glasses.
Great. So those of us who were overprepared can return?
You might want to keep them. I don't know. They might be, who knows what, who knows what you might have done. But, anyway, so, so I shared that with you this evening. I do, I did want to say, it's an interesting thing. The MIAA sent us all the athletic directors and superintendents information that they're, that they've requested that, you know, nobody have outdoor practices that afternoon, which I thought was good for them to remind everybody of that in case districts weren't already think about that. But, so, we'll continue to look at it and pay attention and-
That is Monday, April 8th.
Monday, April 8th.
Thank you.
And then you wanted to share about the literacy-
Sure. The literacy information night is going to be hosted at Christopher Lee School for grades three through five. Our humanities coordinator, Erin Hogan, along with the literacy specialists, Amy Dobbsky, Katie Andronopoulos, and Allison Bates will be leading this evening for any parent or caregiver who's interested in hearing more about the literacy curriculum and helpful hints for their children at home to support them. So that's going to be happening Thursday, April 11th, from 5:30 to 7 o'clock at Christopher Lee.
In person? Just in person?
In person, yes. There is information that's going out in each of the newsletters this week, and it has a QR code or that parents can link on. And if they have any questions in advance or something that they're hoping to have addressed, they can ask that question at that time and kind of RSVP. So just people, so that they have an idea of how many people will be showing up.
Great. School committee updates. Okay.
Policy, we'll have more with our, our policy revisions later. So, that's all I was going to say about policy. I guess we should, you know, people have been asking about school start times, and it's probably worth just giving the update, which is, it's in process. We have engaged with the company, Transfinder, the consultant. They have our student location data, and they're off and in processing that. And they're going to generate sort of like, I think their first step is to, to more or less recreate what we do now, but with their, with their system and kind of recreate the runs. Excuse me, I have a tickle. And then start looking for efficiencies within those runs. So, that's off and running. And the power, Kathy and the other folks are-
Power school oriented as well, so complies with our student information.
Yeah. They get the data from power school. They do it like a nightly, they can, they can do like a nightly update. The other thing I was just going to say is, I had the opportunity to be in Boston this weekend for the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild State Finals. WA's production of Disgraced was in the state finals, one of 14 schools. Dr. Chu came Friday night. We got to watch there.
Yeah, it was great.
Their state final, their final performance of this show. And they did, they did great. They just kept improving and getting better every time I saw it, which was a lot of times. And then on Saturday night, they had the awards, and they got a number of awards. I haven't, they got Victoria Karyuki got Excellence in Acting Award, Ethan Mandel, Xander Hallway, Louis Cassell got Excellence in Technical Theater for Set Design Award. Hayden Pelton and Haley Burns got Excellence in Technical Theater Lighting Design Award. And then, there's, there's the trustees award, which is given to the top acting performance of all 14 schools. And Amir Kapasi got that, which was really, really special. And there's a, there's a photo, I don't know if anybody's seen it on social media, of the moment he got it. And that, it keeps popping up and it just gives, brings me, there's no end to the joy it brings me. And every time I like zoom in, because there's people in the background, his classmates and parents in the background, and to watch everybody's different reactions, it's just great. So, congrats to all of them.
Yeah.
Other school committee up-
Just, oh, go on, Val.
I was going to say, last week, CPAC hosted a terrific Lego event at First Parish. A few of us were there. Just awesome. There's nothing. The kids were all in it. My kids didn't want to leave.
Yeah.
Brought them outside of Wholesome Science. But, it was just great. So, yeah. Just thankful this evening.
Very meditative.
Yeah. You were in the zone.
Yeah. Give me a good bucket of Legos and I'm, it was awesome.
And just on the back of that, that was organized as part of the Nor Diversity Celebration Week. And it was, it was a great success. But I also wanted to give a shout out to the schools and staff within our own district, as I've, I heard a number of, including my own kiddos, coming home and saying, you know, things that they had done to celebrate. And I can speak personally. My, my daughters came back telling me all about the wonderful assembly that Mr. Sardella had put on at the day school. So, you know, it was lovely to see. And I love the fact that the schools have embraced it and the community kind of got more involved with it this year. So that was, that was awesome. But, we'll have Lego 2.0 next year, then. And just one other thing as well, Val, just a reminder that the town DEI meeting, it's typically the last Wednesday of every month. They're actually meeting on Thursday this week. So they are here in Millennium at 7:00 PM, but it's also hybrid, too.
Agreed. Did I miss anything else?
Don't think so.
I don't think I have anything either. Just trying to check what happened in the last two weeks. And we have no students, so we will move on to the First Order of Business, which is the Student Opportunity Act, an update on the new DESI submission process for annual funding of our 137,000 dollars.
580.
Yeah, thank you. And that number, hasn't changed?
Yeah, I don't-
I don't think so.
It's like, it sounds so familiar that I feel like it doesn't change. So-
I don't think it has.
No inflation factor there.
Right. No.
No.
So, if, sure, we're inviting Magali in as well.
We're going to bring Magali in as well.
She's there.
Okay. Equity curriculum instruction and Courtney Moran, Assistant Superintendent.
Yep. So I'll get started. Magali, hopefully you can hear us.
I can. I'm clear.
Okay, great. Great. So, the Student Opportunity Act is actually in year three of six. And this was initially enacted in 2019, when the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education wanted each district to take a look at disparities in achievement and their attempt at kind of putting a little bit more money into Chapter 70 funding. In early January of this year, DESI kind of put out some further guidance to the district, saying, "We are going to get this jump started again," because 2019, as you can imagine, was a little bit challenging with the years that followed and COVID. And they just wanted to give the SOA another jump start. So, right now, we, all districts are in the second round of preparing a plan called the SOA, not to be confused with the SOI or the, any other S's. And again, our job as a district is to review some of the disparities in our data and articulate what evidence-based curriculum or programming we are using or implementing to help curve those disparities to the best of our abilities. So, we leaned heavy on the data that's available to us through MCAS achievement and other achievement measures through the state, and identified our lowest performing groups as our English language learners, our students with disabilities, and low income. Our three-year plan, Magali's going to speak a little bit more about in a moment, but certainly that includes identifying each of our students that are falling in this, partially meeting expectations or not meeting expectations according to MCAS standards. And what our hope is to do is to identify who, well, we know who, we know who each of those students are, to track them along the way using various measures, including our EL curriculum product, our DIBELS and MCAS, with the hope that with our new implementation of the EL curriculum, we will see some more movement and we will move some of those students along the continuum. So with that, I'll turn it over to Magali.
Thank you. Good evening. And so I'm going to add to the acronyms SOS, because the SOA is kind of like that. I see the SOA as the through line of our strategic district plan, along with the school improvement plans, as the focus groups that we are going to track data-wise, not track curriculum or tracking-wise in that sense, but through achievement and proficiency in our reading, DIBELS scores, and our ELA, MCAS proficiency or achievement scores. And those lowest performing students happen to be the three subgroups that Assistant Superintendent Courtney Moran just shared. So, since there's been so much heavy work, which is great, we can follow this through line of students. I know we have students that started this in 2019, but given that our DIBELS data in third grade is the first time we are really solid with having a one-year implementation of science of reading curriculum. So, you know, that's a good baseline. And so from there on out, we're going to track those third graders moving up, because the data is showing us that in sixth and eighth grade, there's also ELA achievement declines in the data. And so, our projection is that with the investment in the science of reading and new curriculum that we are doing, are using, and the professional development that our teachers are receiving through the curriculum coordinators and our consultants, that the focus and the money that Essar gave us, it has been and will continue to support this momentum. We see in the data for Abbott, Erin and I had a discussion, because we like data, and it was interesting that she pointed out that Abbott's DIBELS scores were positive in a sense of growth, given that it's our first year of full implementation at grade three. And that NavNACIT feeds into them. And so NavNACIT had the Early Literacy Grant at the beginning, too. So, you know, following these three groups until the end of the SOA for 2026, it'll be interesting to have all of the schools kind of united around this small cohort of 100 or so students. And it will be interesting to see those measures and track those students along the way. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Magali. Discuss, sorry, were you going to add anything?
Well, I just wanted to add a little bit around the, I spoke about the funding piece, right? And so that sounds a little bit exciting or enticing, think that we're going to get some money. But this is a little bit more of a backwards design about, the, the money is already there. It's built into the Chapter 70 money, and it is relatively small in comparison to what our investment has already been in terms of evidence-based curriculum products. And the one being the EL education, which we're referring to tonight. Because this money was divided in different ways across the state, there was 195 districts that received an increase in their foundation rate, as well as a per pupil expenditure that could have gone up to $60 per student. For districts where, like ourselves, we fell into a pocket of 124 districts where we did not have an increase in any of our foundation and had a less than $60 per pupil expenditure added to us. So that's where we got this $137,580. So, when we do submit, we will take the report, add it to the portal, include the money that we have contributed in kind, as well as what the 137 is, is offering to us, and submit that to the state. The state is asking, this time, for the first time, for school committees to approve the plan before the submittal, which is due on April 1st, which is the reason why we come to you tonight.
Thank you.
I agree with all that Courtney added. Thank you. That's important. And the investment that the district has made also into the ESL curriculum and, you know, the, the, the working on the WIDA, English Language Development Standards, I have no doubt that we're going to see that, that achievement and proficiency show up in our grade three ELA, MCAS scores. And so I'm hopeful, but also confident that, you know, the investment that the district has made in, in that curriculum is also going to be helpful in boosting this plan and this focus. So, thank you.
Thank you. Open it up to the committee. Any questions, discussion, reactions? Chen has his hand up. He's waving at you. He's been waving at you.
The last page. Can you explain, like, all those numbers, what it means? So, like 2023, 492, so like different groups? And then it has recovery or forward? What does that mean? The last page?
Oh, yeah. Magali, do you want to address that last page of the MCAS data?
Yeah, that's a, that's a tricky page. That's a great question. The recovery and forward is if, in our accountability, if we've made, reached our targets for that group, that subgroup, then we would be in, in recovery. And the district as a whole is in recovery after COVID, and the way that the, the, the state has adjusted the achievement scores. So, if you're on a forward, it means that you need some moderate or some growth, but you still need to catch up. And so, it's, they use the scores, the 2019 and 22 achievement scores. And if, and if they saw that a group stayed the same or grew in achievement, then they would be on the recovery path. If they stayed the same or went below in achievement compared to the, from the 2019, 22 targets, then they would say forward. They're on a path forward. So, that means that we as a district need to focus a little more intensely in that population. And so, it is, we have EL, former EL. And so, we are predicting that they'll move a few, you know, a few target points for accountability. I think that next year, with the second year of the ESL department's new use of Flashlight 360, the English 3D curriculum, which was supported by Title III funds, but also the town funds, that money was put to good use. And so, that is going to support and enhance that subgroup within the lowest performing group. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. So like, for example, 492, is that the MCAS score number, or, or it's not?
No, it's the achievement baseline, like the scaled score of MCAS. It's not the SGP, like the student growth percentile.
It's like the target range. Am I understanding that correct? If you look across at lowest income students, it says 492 recovery. But then if you look at the, like, it's a target range. Am I reading that right, Magali? So, you want to be between 495 and 497?
Yeah, to be in the proficient range. Because remember, MCAS changed, when they changed the criteria, they also had to change the target for the scaled score. So, those are the achievement ranges for that group. So if you're at like a 500 or higher, you're like in the means category.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
And that's a great question, because I, the recovery in the path, that I had to go back and really look at why those changes were made.
And so you have to provide this data? Is it for the next three, is it three years, this year being year one?
Well, yeah. So, we have, we're going to track the third graders with, that have the EL curriculum with the science of reading and DIBELS. But also, so that group, even the kids in 2019, we can track moving up, because they're going to take ELA again in fifth, sixth, and so on.
Oh, okay.
But specifically, we need to look at grades six and eight, because according to our heat map, where our discrepancies are, is that we're seeing ELA is, is, is falling short in grades six and eight. And that is stemming from elementary. So, the group that started in 2019, I believe, are fifth graders and moving up. The cohort now in grade three is actually really a critical group that we can watch, because of the science of reading and the investments that were made. And then we're, we can check them in sixth grade ELA, and then we can check them again in eighth grade ELA for the subsequent years. So, these 94 kids in the, this group, the numbers will fluctuate for the sample size, because kids will be in and out, but we're always looking at these numbers. And then in third grade, we're just going to look at every third grade overall each year and see the effects of science of reading coming up. And then in third grade, we're going to see the pivoting of, of the achievement.
So, so we are actually looking into two kinds of data. One is like, every year we'll look into the third grade. So compare like third grade of this year versus last year, and then 25, 25, 26, to say, hey,
Yeah.
How we're doing on the third grade level. And also follow the 94 kids, the cohort from third grade to eighth grade. Is that right?
Yeah. Yes. Because we need to show the state and the feds that the, the progress of the achievement of these, these groups that have the biggest discrepancy in our data.
Thank you.
It's really, it's really like a case study, like action research.
Awesome. Catherine, when you asked the question about these numbers, these numbers will always be available to us as the, the state data that they kind of give back to us.
Yeah, yeah.
When we're looking at our own metrics for tracking them, we'll, we're going to be keeping a close eye on those DIBELS scores,
Yeah.
the EL curriculum, as well as the MCAS scores.
So, you, you know how you're saying this is an annual thing, then, that-
There, there, we will have to submit progress-
Yeah.
-according to what the goals-
Okay.
-happens to be. There are other districts that are, you know, taking a stab at multiple goals. We're not. We, according to the money that we have been allocated, certainly this is an aggressive goal in itself, given that amount of money, so.
And so you'll require another vote, will you, next year from us?
I don't think so, but that's not clear right now. We can certainly bring it back as what our progress has looked like.
Yeah, I think that will be-
But I don't know if you would need another vote prior to the next plan, which would be in '26.
I, that's my understanding, too, is that, and next year is the first year that we need to report to the state. And they only require that we had two data points, which is DIBELS and MCAS. But it doesn't mean that internally, we are also looking at our own internal assessments along the way. So, we have Lexia, we have- So we have Lexia, we have Flashlight Three Sixty assessment, um, and so on. Um, so i- is that, this is part of that MTSS model of assessments. I apologize if you can hear my dog barking.
No, we can't. You're fine.
Um, so to clarify, if a student moves out of a group, let's say EL student tests high in the WIDA, is no longer identified EL, are we still tracking them in that cohort though? For, for a three-year purpose?
If that, part of that ninety-four, we wanna be able to, that's what we wanna see.
Yes.
We wanna see them jump out of that, right?
But you know, kids that may move, you know, in or out, right?
Yeah, they're still in the cohort of um, the Ls and formerly L.
Got it, yep.
Anything else? So just to reiterate, we are looking for a vote on this tonight for the state deadline of April first. Any final questions or comments? Or a motion?
Motion uh, for a vote on the Student Opportunity Act.
A second. Thank you, Bill and Mari. So uh, all those in favor of approving this submission of Student Opportunity Act? Great, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
That was interesting.
Thank you for sharing all of that. Um, next on our agenda. Thanks, Magali.
Thanks, Magali.
Thank you.
Uh, next on our agenda is, was a placeholder intended for um, post.
The meeting that never was.
Annual town meeting. But for anyone watching us and not Select Board or that hasn't heard anything about it since Saturday.
It went great.
Annual Town Meeting was postponed due to being at capacity um, at WA. And as we speak, or maybe already, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, um.
Not already.
No.
No.
Awesome. Um.
Cheers to civic engagement though.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, the Select Board is deciding tonight what that date for the postponed um, uh, date, town meeting date would be. I know they announced it at the meeting as May fourth, but it could potentially s- move a week earlier to April twenty-seventh, with the rain date being the next day on Sunday. Um, and that plan would be to be, have, to go back to our twenty-twenty era and have it on Westford Academy Fields, so that there is, I think, a capacity of three thousand, I believe, somewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so that's in the works and being finalized by the Select Board tonight.
I don't wanna be that person that's like, would it, like, so the rain dates, if it rains, then they don't have it? And then they have it the next day?
Yes.
So like, no intense, no, nothing like that?
Um, not that I am aware of, but just asking.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
I think we'll have like a few unprecedented kinda situations here, okay?
Right, you're right, it could be rainy both Saturday and Sunday.
That might be a reason that they might look at the twenty-seventh, so that they have multiple rain dates.
So Saturday is Passover?
The twenty-seventh?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it's Passover.
Yep.
Oh, and, yeah.
Twenty-seventh is still, it's still part of, it's part of Passover.
Yeah, cause people were saying that May fourth was part of Passover, but it's the whole.
Okay, I think the unfortunate thing with that time of year is that there's no good date.
Yeah, it could rain for like an entire month.
But, and not, exactly, but not even weather-wise, you're, you've got, yeah, you know, there's, there's so much going on, so.
Yeah.
And it's unfortunate.
So um, I was hoping that this, this agenda would have sort of us reflecting on a vote coming out of Annual Town Meeting. Um, without that, uh, we left it on obviously as a sort of a placeholder. But if there's anything that now we're sort of, now, with, without that large gap between town meeting and the ballot, um, now it will only be a gap, like, we, we were like, okay, we're gonna have town meeting and get some amount of information, right? Like either the taxpayers support this, town meeting supports that, of the scenarios. Um, and then we would have a little bit of time before the ballot vote. But now we, that timeline is shortened. So I just wanted to make sure to open it up in case you, anyone has thoughts on how to, a- any further areas of discussion over the next couple of weeks, or?
I wanna, oh.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanna say that I feel like there's been an enormous amount of preparation from this group. Not just like in the last few months, but like for the last year. I feel, I understand that there's a shortened timeline and that there might be anxiety about that. But I think that folks have really prepared and put a lot of thoughtful preparation and investigation and research. And I think now it's just whatever happens at town meeting will trigger one of those alternative plans. I feel like everyone has really put their part, including Jenny, who I'm not looking at, she's back there. But I, I think I just wanna say that out loud, because I, I don't wanna s- to like spend a lot of time like speculating and with a lot of conjecture. Like, I think the work has been done, and now it's just about like what happens at town meeting.
Thanks, yeah, I would agree.
I think that people have worked really hard, and I think now it's just, unfortunately, we have to wait. But I, but I think the work is done.
Yeah.
Even on the, even on the, the, the idea of the fact that for people who weren't able to pay attention that whole time, but they were starting to ask questions just even before town meeting, there was a lot of that as well. So it's like even just before Saturday, there was a lot more, you know, questions being answered and things like that, which I think is, uh, it is good, and I agree, you know, glad to see the civic engagement. I was also happy that, from my perspective, on the, the two bus rides that I took back and forth to the car, um, people were in great spirits.
Yeah.
Or you took the bus.
I took the bus, yeah, and people were, people were in great spirits, which I thought was uh.
I think there was.
I thought was great. And I know that there were people who had all, a whole bunch of different opinions on the bus, you know? But everyone was collectively.
They were all really positive about how the organization of it. I think that like nobody was faulting staff or.
Not that, not that I heard.
No, I, I enjoyed um, the coffee and the donut.
Okay, breaking news.
Done deal.
April twenty-seventh.
April twenty-seventh.
Oh, so they did, okay.
The move is April twenty-seventh.
So um.
So now we know.
Closed captioning told me that.
Out of the count, town, town, town meeting, I, I think like, I had a little bit of reflection, mostly like, it's great, we have like, such a gr- great turnout, right, the saving engagement, we haven't seen for probably like twenty, thirty years.
Ever, yeah.
Um, but on the other side really means like, this is really very divisive in this town. Though, so like, no, no matter how we actually look at it, it's like, um, there are a lot of people very passionate on, on either side, right? Um, that, that actually uh, goes back into like what I have been always thinking about. It's like, is now like a different number which can bring more people over? Because like, if the number is different, I can imagine there are more people will go to the yes side. Because people are comfortable with a lower number, uh, that's what I always said. Uh, I think the six point eight million nu- number, obviously, it is what it is. But that's also what caused a lot of people to show up, because it's very even, and then people know, know it.
Hmm.
And then if it's a different number, maybe we can get to sixty percent, right? Uh, instead of, right now, I can, I don't have a crisp ball, but like, I feel like it's very diff- uh, it's, it's very diff- uh, like, it's very divided.
Nobody knows, yeah.
That's my observation, I don't know about you guys.
Yeah.
Well, that number is not up to us. Um, but I, I do just wanna bring us back to, if there's anything that, that we need to do, I just wanna like give that, that time.
I think our work will come after town meeting and come after the ballot. And I think it will continue in listening to townspeople and uh, working with other town leaders on, on the work that still continues. So, I, you know, I think focusing on, on wherever that pathway goes.
And, and I suppose on the back of that then, Bill, what I'd be kind of trying to figure out is, what does that path look like? So we have voted on our needs, or, or, you know, what we've submitted, um. And we're not gonna know until literally that week, we'll have the town meeting, or the week before. So in the space of two weeks, we'll have the town meeting and the ballot, um, which is gonna bring us up to May seventh. What happens for us in terms of that B budget? Because I, we've never really dived into it or voted on it, and.
We didn't vote on it.
Yeah. Um, and so I think I'm just trying to figure out in my head what the process is and where is the, what kinda path forward in terms of, um, maybe discussing that a bit more and finalizing it? And do we require a budget, I assume, a vote at what point? Because if that's then, you know, bringing us up to the mid-May, we've g- what, a month to do that?
I, I, I don't know if like, we can make a vote on the B budget, because two of us are not gonna be at that time. Two, so like, I don't want to vo- because like, two of us are not gonna be like on the committee to vote for that. So like, I don't want to actually like, vote for, for example, for B budget, like, well, like, two new members are not gonna come on board, so.
So you're saying if we, you should leave that vote for the new members?
Yes.
After the May seventh, and that what, we would have our budget discussions, if, if there's a new budget needing to be prepared?
What do you mean a new budget?
Well, not a new budget, but a different.
I think there's two, uh, I'm hearing two different things, um, that you're saying, Catherine. You're talking about like, talking more about the outcome of a B budget, right? As a, as a committee talking about that. And then the actual voting on that, I'm, I don't know if we ever really got clarity as to if this group would ever have to vote again? You know what I'm saying? Like, I'm not rea- I'm not sure, because like, when the, like, the town, town meeting votes on the number for the town, right? And then the school committee, I mean, then the school budget is a line item within that. And if that.
Let me just back up for a minute, we've always voted to go into FinCom hearings.
Right.
Our proposal.
Yep.
So, so that's.
So we did that.
Yeah.
We did that. And then I, I'm, I'm just curious as to, I, I think like other things that we've done, like even the conversation we're about to have in a little bit about, about um, school choice, right? There's the, there's the benefit of having the discussion. Um, and there's definitely the benefit of voting approval and, 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 and I think doing things like that.
Yeah.
But I, I just don't know if we ever got the answer as to whether legally you have to do something in terms of the school committee voting on a different number, I don't know.
I would assume we have to, I mean, it's, it's.
School committee has to approve the budget.
We have to approve the budget.
But like, if we go back to B budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Obviously, like, if the conversation ever happens, um, the town meeting, for example, voted for the overall number, I strongly encourage this committee, go back to a town, because that overall number with only two percent allocation increase for the school. That number should, that this committee should fought, fight for that number, because we got two point eight point nine percent in the previous two years.
And, and that's my follow-on is that, you know, we may decide as a committee that the two percent, we might need to go back to the town or, or, or kind of have a look. And so that's what I'm trying to figure out is, what does the process look like in terms of having those discussions? Do we hold off and wait until we see what we have at the end of May seventh? And is that enough time to have those discussions and vote? And everything by July first, when we need the budget voted on?
So.
Or do we start in advance?
Well, like, um, there will be conversations between now and then with town and school partners. Um, like Chris and I, Dr. Chu and I are gonna sit down with Tom Clay, Select Board Chair, and Kristen Last, Town Manager, soon. Um, and, and so I'll just continue to bring that to the committee, and then we can work that into the, the, what that looks like, I guess. Um, but I guess what I wanna make sure is, like, one thing um, that we, that I've talked to Dr. Chu about for the April eighth meeting is um, like a job description for the academic coach that would replace the interventionists. And what kind of caseload or schedule that might actually look like? Like, if, if that was, if, if we weren't waiting on a vote, we would have already sket- or, that's, that would be normal for us to sketch that out and say, what is this gonna look like?
Yeah.
So that's what I wanna make sure that, if there's anything else like that.
Yeah, and.
That, that we want to see from admin.
Yeah.
We need to.
Articulate that.
Articulate.
And that would be the biggest area of concern for me right now, is what is that plan for the intervention model? Um, not just what the job description is, but, you know, truly the, how it's, how it's gonna support the students, especially even tonight when we're hearing, we've got discrepancies in our sixth and eighth grade.
So um.
ELA results, and we're talking about cutting, potentially getting rid of our reading electives and stuff. And, and, and to me, I just don't feel as a school committee member, we have kind of gone through that in, um, with any sort of fidelity at the moment. Cause I felt we, it took so long to just try and figure out what, where that A budget was landing. Cause there was, I don't know, five iterations of it in some shape or form, um.
Well, you all acknowledged how much Jenny, specifically Jenny and I, had to do to create two budgets. It's like, you also have to have time to have two budget discussions.
Exactly, yeah.
So I mean, that's the same thing, it's like you had, we fully vetted out that first discussion.
Exactly.
But you're right, there's, there's, we still need more time. I will say, looking at it, there's four meetings that still take place. We also, not that you want to, but we also can always hold additional meetings, right? If we feel like we need to do that in order to, you know, have more discussion.
Mari, you were gonna say something? I'm sorry? Did you look a minute ago, I thought, I, in my head, I was like, come back over here. Looked like somebody was gonna say something, no?
I was, but I think the moment passed.
Yeah, you raised your hand.
Yeah. It got said.
Somebody else.
Covered.
I think my concern is just keeping in mind that behind every budget cut is a person. Um, and certainly, um, there's a lot of anxiety in the district around people who wanna stay within our district, who we would like to keep in the district. And sadly, when we're looking at budget cuts this big, that, you know, decisions have to be made. And so, um, it will be difficult and, and hopefully, we can kind of lean into the recommendations that are being made, because we're trying to be as thoughtful as poss- uh, as possible, knowing who our student population is, knowing what our numbers and our data tell us, right? Like, having gaps in education have never been, is, is not a new thing, even though we're talking about it tonight in terms of SOA. Um, unfortunately, there are always students that do have an achievement gap. And clearly, those are the ones that just come with us with more complexities and require a little bit more of specialized instruction to get them there at the end of the road. And that's what we're always looking at, right? So as much as we are tracking students throughout their elementary and middle school, our eyes are still on the, the final preparation and making sure that they are able to achieve that diploma and be, um, you know, great citizens and move on to the next step of their adulthood. So I'm not sure where I was just going with that, other than, other than the fact that, yeah, we don't have a lot of time, there's a lot of raw emotion behind everything, and.
We only have three meetings, I said four, cause I counted May sixth. So we have three meetings after the vote on May seventh, cause we'll have a meeting the night before.
Right.
Oh, three meetings after the vote. I actually thought you meant we had that many meetings between now and, and town meeting.
Oh, yeah, no. I, I, I think this discussion that we're having, right, which is what happens if, if we are in a B budget situation, which, you know, there's obviously a very real prospect of it. Um, I hope that whoever's watching this and I, from the community understands what, well, hopefully they'll lend us some patience as we work through some of those growing pains, right? As Assistant Superintendent Moran was saying, that um, this will have effects beyond just loss of faculty and staff, right? Dr. Chu was articulating with the students earlier that this might affect student schedules next year. Particularly the WA students who usually know by May what their schedule is for the following year. We might have to, we might not know what their schedules are going to be till August. So this is going to have ramifications that are going to spiral into the summer. Uh, and I would ask for the community to um, give us some grace as we, a district, deal with such big cuts like that and how uh, Westford will look next year. It will take time, uh, and there will be a lot of questions that we don't have the answer to now. Uh, that will get answered as we go through it, right?
Well said, Sean.
So we'll plan for our April eighth meeting to have something on the agenda about the elementary academic coach model, and so that we can have that-
Elementary and middle school, isn't it?
Well, the academic coaches already exist at the middle school.
Yeah, yeah.
They already exist at the middle school, but the-
But we have interventionists at the middle school and-
That aren't being replaced by an academic coach. The elementary is the, the change in model.
Right.
So they'll just be gone.
They'll just be gone.
Right. There's already a coach there.
Right.
I think that's something I'd like to further explore or discuss at that meeting.
So, um, more about the supports at the middle school that exist with, in a B budget that would remain?
Well, when you think of, you know, when you've got a math interventionist, especially at middle school, sometimes I can barely do fifth grade math. And so you're, you know, knowing how that model works, and I've also heard, you know, amazing things about the support of that general reading elective and what goes on in that class. I know it's not an intervention ever interventionist, it's, it's a class, but I believe it's extremely effective in, um, supporting students, bringing up those kind of ELA skills. And, and it seems to be very much sixth and seventh graders who seem to access it. So I just, I would really, I, I just don't know how just going down to an academic coach in that model in the middle school is gonna work.
So Catherine-
Yeah.
In order, in, in both of the points you've made, one of them about the, the second budget and the other one about the, these, um, interventions that you're concerned about, like, would the conversation at the next meeting include a discussion of how many students would be impacted? 'Cause I think at the heart, like, that's what you're asking.
Yeah, it's, yeah, how, how we see-
How many students would be impacted with, yeah.
With this, yeah.
So I guess, I just, to be fair to
Yeah.
The, the data we've already been given in our slides from January, they do have enrollment and how many kids are getting serviced with both the middle school interventions and the middle school reading class.
But then, of the academic coaches, are there, 'cause isn't, is there, I don't know, are they full ti- are the academic coaches full-time at the middle school?
Mm-hmm.
So, ha- are, are they also servicing those students or are those students just not gonna have any support or what's their capacity? So that, that's what I'm trying to figure out is, um-
And I, and I, I hear you, and I think we can have a conversation about it.
Yeah.
Again, the, the difficult thing is that uh, this is another good time to remind everybody who might just be listening for the first time. These are not truly recommendations that we want to see.
No, no.
You know, so I think it's just an important thing to remember, and it kinda comes back down to, these were, these were difficult recommendations to make. We can continue talking about them and we can provide more information as to the rationale that, that, that came up to those recommendations and be happy to answer questions about it. I think we can, we can revisit that data.
And so that's why-
It has been a while since we-
Yeah, sure.
Since we looked at it, so I think it would be a good thing for, for us to, to point back to, and, and I think we can just have a more, we can just, yeah, we can, we can talk more through what we think that it might look like.
Yeah.
Um, but I just, I publicly wanna say that I, 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 we know that students are not going to be getting the same level of support that they are currently getting. That's just the nature of reductions. That's right, right. So, um, but we'll talk about what our plan is, um, and, and what we think that, that it would look like, and then I think we can have a more, maybe a more informed conversation about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think one of the important pieces to call out is what would be our entrance and exit criteria in terms of receiving those interventions. Because when you have it, sometimes it's a little bit easy and convenient to say, oh, I think somebody might be able to benefit from, you know, this person, but really looking at, um, knowing that we want our students to stay in front of general education teachers to the, to the maximum extent, right? And that's exactly what our EL curriculum at the elementary, um, level is encouraging us to do. Um, and to provide that tier one and tier two support right in the classroom. So, given all of that, I think we wanna just shore up our exit and entrance criteria to make sure that the students that truly are requiring those services are getting those.
So, and, and I only wanted to make sure that, I feel like my goal as chair is to make sure that the questions I'm hearing translate into what data we wanna see versus what may, may have already been given, or so do you feel like you've heard enough for April eighth?
I think so, I think, yeah.
What the plan for supports are in elementary and middle school in no override budget?
I don't think we'll be able to give you a caseload number
Sure.
For next September, because a lot of times, those decisions are being made in the fall as the curriculum teams kinda dive into the data and look at the first benchmarking to determine who requires that and-
Maybe not like an exact number, but I think you can give us a range.
Yeah, like even based on this, like a rough idea for this year.
Has looked like, right, or what the last few years have looked like.
What will help is as we talk about the, the criteria that we think should exist for students to receive certain supports, I think that will, that will also indicate that there are some students who are receiving supports who wouldn't meet that criteria.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, so like the bubbles, right, the camps kinda shift, right, based on what you cannot offer. Yeah, right, yep.
And, um, even if it's not like a, a caseload, I'm, I'm envisioning like, uh, okay, this person works this amount of time
Yep.
And can see groups of this many kids or this many kids and therefore has a, a capacity of, of this.
Yep, yep.
Okay, great. Any final thoughts on?
No, let's move, move on.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm gonna move on to the eight oh five agenda item for the elementary assistant principal job description.
So this is our second pass at viewing the, um, elementary assistant principal position. Um, that had some minor tweaks to it, um, from the, our initial, um, job description that was presented several years ago. Um, based on some, um, feedback that we received at the last meeting. Uh, we did add in some information around, um, knowledge of, um, where did you put that?
Qualifications, safety care certified, is it that?
Well, we had that, and then right after it, we wanted to talk about-
The next bullet, we added that, the experience with restorative and or collaborative problem-solving practices is highly valued. So we added it as a second bullet right after that.
This job description was again shared with, um, building administration at the elementary level, who gave thumbs up, provided a little bit of feedback, and Gerard Carflin also shared it with, um, his executive board of the CPAC, um, which they were thankful for that opportunity to view it, um, and did not have any other, um, input to add.
Okay. Any questions?
Uh, just briefly, Courtney, what's the timeline for hiring of this?
So, this job description did not hold up us posting for it.
Go ahead.
Um, because our posting was a little bit different than what might be said in here. Certainly, this is great to be able to give to the candidate to say this is the job description and to have that, but, um, we have had a great turnout in terms of the pool. We're really happy, we have twenty-seven or twenty-eight candidates. Um, it's probably the highest pool that we've seen in quite a while. Um, it's probably due to the timing of, of, of this search, as well as there's a lot of movement right now across the state in a lot of teaching and administrative positions. So, um, Nina and, um, Nina, um, Volf and Gerard Coughlin are taking, taking a look at that first, um, selection process of who will be coming in for interviews. Um, clearly, they are looking for as much experience as possible, especially in special education, knowing that that is such a heavy push for this position. Um, they are bringing together a selection committee that will have their first meeting on Thursday, and they will vet some questions, um, talk about, you know, the confidentiality process of an interview, and go from there. So we're in good standing.
Great.
Any motions?
Motion to approve the
Job description.
Job description of a s- elementary assistant principal.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any final comments? All in favor? Thank you very much for sharing it with us and being open to the updates. Next is the FY twenty-five school choice openings.
So, so I, I shared with you, um, a memo previously where I talked about, uh, my recommendations to uh, have seventeen open slots for next year, which would actually take our total number of school choice students up to eighty-one. We had been, um, we had a cap, a suggested cap in the past of seventy-three. Um, the rationale behind this is because it's actually allowing us to take some students who we are supporting as staff enrollments, who we're not receiving any funding for, that we might be able to move them into school choice. So the actual overall potential change of out of district stu- or non-resident students is potentially five. Um, going up from one sixteen to one twenty-one, if you look at those two different, um, charts. And actually, four of them are, four of those are kindergartners, um, so that, that wouldn't be included, so it's really only changing. If I looked at this year's numbers to the proposed next year, it would be very similar. Um, it would be even less of a change than five. But that's my recommendation. I don't know if you've had other thoughts about it, if you've had questions or comments. Um, but like we had talked about, we, we, the, the actual committee, that you, you're only required to, to vote and have a hearing if you're choosing to leave the school choice.
Yeah.
But we thought that we still have, have this conversation about recommendations, what happened last year, um, which also could happen again this year, was that you provided me the opportunity to adjust those if enrollment changed over the summer before we did the opening. So last year, I actually removed, um, I think, two slots when our enrollment had increased. So if something like that happens again before we do the school choice lottery, which takes place in the middle of summer, I would just ask, I'll keep you informed, but I would just ask that, you know, we not have to go through a, a vote again in order to, to make that adjustment.
Yep, um. Yeah, I mean, I think we kinda got into it this year with the, with the goal of a vote. I mean, we were changing, um, sort of the, our practice a little bit for the siblings, but our policy definitely does not specify a vote, and so the law doesn't require that either unless we're, like you said, we're ending the program. Um, but it has been our practice of recent years and with sort of this pivot, um, I thought it made sense. Um, and so just if someone's listening, the spots are related to siblings, and siblings get priority.
Yep, and, and, and the, um, the ninth grade, we have, we have a, 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 a number of students who are going from eighth grade to ninth grade who, they're students of employees who were already, who we already have, and that we're supporting in the district. And so that's the only difference that's not siblings.
Right.
The others are all identifying siblings who, for one reason or the other, we hadn't opened slots in their grade in the past, so their sibling might already be in school choice, and that's something that we had learned, that we can do that. So that's the reason why that's the change.
And opening slots, say, for ninth grade this year, doesn't mean we have the same slots open again for next year.
Correct, correct, yep, yep. Um, yeah, I guess the all-layered thing I would say is that based on what you had just said, maybe, maybe the motion would be, if you support this, that maybe you vote that we, um, open up up to eighty-one slots, you know, which also then kinda gives me that leeway to close them.
Mm-hmm.
But then I wouldn't necessarily be increasing them.
Yep.
You know?
I would support that, yeah, yeah. Any final thoughts?
All good.
Okay.
Takes place in the middle of the summer too, we'll communicate that. Um, Kathy does an excellent job talking with families, and so as families, they look, we post it on the website so people can see
Yep.
Where that is.
Great, thank you. Um, looking for a motion.
Um, motion to authorize superintendent to open up to eighty-one school choice positions.
Second.
Actually, now that we said that, technically, we're opening seventeen, and so our number of school choice students would be eighty-one, but I'm not opening eighty-one slots.
Up to seventeen slots.
That's the number you would be tweaking.
Seventeen new.
Up to seventeen.
Motion to authorize superintendent to open up to seventeen new school choice slots. For next year.
Twenty-five, yeah.
Second.
Okay, last chance. All in favor?
Thank you.
Policy updates.
Policy updates, we have some.
Just a few.
So we have six impacted policies, just a little background, the idea behind all of these, I, I think it's twofold. One is, um, there, there is a kind of a, a thread or common current running through them, and on one hand, we want to, as a committee, um, voice, say, ideals and, and, and guidance and leadership as far as what we believe with, when it comes to instructional materials, controversial issues, controversial speakers, et cetera. And the other was, in, in a couple of instances, we wanted to make sure it was clear what the process and procedures would be, um, especially when it comes to reconsideration. And so for those folks who don't know, reconsideration is if somebody decides that some material, whether it be in a library or in a classroom, um, should not be in the schools. They have concerns. There's a process for allowing them to voice those concerns, and then having administration um, review and come to a decision on the appropriateness of those materials. And so, what we really wanna make sure we're doing is, and, and again, this is a trend, a lot of committees are looking at these to make sure that we are supporting our professionals, our library professionals, our classroom professionals, that they have the freedom to put materials in front of our students that best teach them, that best represent the breadth and diversity of our student population and the world around us. Um, and that our students have the freedom to have access to a wide range of reading, reading and library resources. And we don't, we wanna make sure that the, that's protected, right? But we also wanna give a process when there are concerns in the public.
A number of these were, were quite, were relatively outdated, I think, well, are they all, yeah, so they were all really-
Uh, not all, but most.
Most of them.
So is that the difference between, like, six one one eight and six one one nine, is that one is like library and one is classroom?
Yes, so I'll walk through briefly, um, first, can I move that we waive the first reading of those?
Yes.
Ah, no.
Uh, second. You made a motion.
Yeah.
I'm seconding it.
Okay.
All those in favor?
So we're clear, if we, if we vote against this, Chris has to read all of those.
That's correct.
Crossed my mind.
Thank you.
So yes, and, and we looked at a lot of other districts, we looked at the MAS C model policies, and there's different ways people group them, and we, we spent a while trying to figure out how we wanted to do it, given how we already had the policies grouped. But what we end up with, yes, P six one one eight primarily deals with library materials and how those are selected. Six one one nine is instructional material, so these would be classroom materials. Um, and then, what you'll see in six one one eight is that there's a large section removed at the end, and that is really, it's, it says challenged material, this is what we're calling reconsideration, and we've moved that to P one five oh five, and we've renamed that reconsideration of instructional or library resources. Before, that policy was called Public Complaints. Public complaints about instructional or library resources. And it was a little bit different, and it was a little, a little looser on what the process would be, and we wanted to tighten it up, and we wanted to make sure, um, both six one one eight, six one one nine point to this for when reconsideration. And so I'd say the bulk of our, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I like that too, because ideally, you might step through that process a couple of times and be able to update just that policy.
Yeah.
Right.
So that makes sense to, to me.
And it's a different thing, like selecting materials completely different from having to evaluate whether it should remain in, in the school. And so, uh, the, most of the changes to all the policies occur in that one, 'cause we really fleshed out the process based on what we were seeing elsewhere as far as best practice and, and that sort of thing. So, um, you can, you can go through what that process is. I apologize that in our, um, change tracking, the, the numbering gets very, uh, weird, but it will get strained out once we accept all those. And you'll notice that we have a lot of margin notes in red. You know, sometimes we'll do an explanatory document, um, supplemental to the policies that explain the rationale. We ended up just marking up these in the margins, just so people could easily see why things were added, why things were taken out. So that's sort of the, the library and classroom materials section, and then, we had two separate policies. We had six one two one, which was called Teaching About Controversial Issues, and then we had six one two two, which was about controversial speakers. We decided to merge those, and so six one one, six one two two, if, if- And so six one one, six one two two, if if, um, if voted to approve these policies, that will actually go away.
Okay.
And everything is in six one two one.
Yep.
And so it touches on classroom instruction that could be have controversial, so guidance to to staff on how to approach that. Student initiate forums so that there's at least some guidance and framework, um, for when students want to hold a forum. That might be controversial. And then also inviting outside speakers into the schools. And then lastly, what if the school is being, um, is being rented after hours? And what sorts of things and what sorts of guidance do we want to have around that?
Was there, was there MAS C guidance for that too?
Yeah.
Oh, great, okay.
And in fact, they had amalgamated those two policies as well, so, um, they'd already suggested that.
And then while we were touching on hot hot bu- hot buttons, we decided to look at our six one two three, which is, it was called curriculum containing sexual issues, which I think is a terrible. And but to, more to the point, the MGLs don't say a lot, but they talk about, um, notification, parental notification. That's really what it comes down to is we have to notify parents and they have to be offered a reasonable opportunity to examine the materials and opt their child out. And we, before, there was a lot, we we wanted to make sure that was all up to date, compliant with the law, and again, gave clear guidance to to administration and staff on that.
It's also, I mean, it's it's also sex education. It's not just sexual issues. It's sex education.
Right, sorry, it has to be part of that curriculum. It's not just a class who touches on something in in a book they're reading. That that was the other reason to to change the title, right? Thank you. And so we got this out to administration. We, um, we got this out to our library staff. We got good feedback.
They were very grateful to.
K to twelve.
EDS.
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
Yep. Got good feedback, which we've already incorporated in.
Yeah.
We've got some notes from Magali, which we will incorporate in as we go. But I don't think it's going to fundamentally change it such that
No.
I'm comfortable putting these up for public comment because I think these aren't
They're not, yeah.
aren't going to have a problem with these.
They're not substantive.
They're not.
No.
And that's where we're at. We'll put these on the website tomorrow. They need to be up per our policy for at least twelve business days. We're going to do that, which means we meet, that takes us through
April eleventh.
and then we're going to meet as committee on Friday, April twelfth.
Yeah.
And review any public comment. And then we would bring that to the next meeting then.
So on the eighth is just like that midpoint.
That's second or second meeting.
Yes, that second meeting where the committee will have it on the agenda.
Is that technically a second reading or is this?
Do the second reading for the very end.
No, it's the second meeting, the last one, yeah.
So the second reading and a vote on.
On the third meeting.
And the eighth will be any further committee discussion.
So you can still make a remark.
Comment on AY eight.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and public comment as well, thank you.
Maybe for, it'd be close to his end too, right?
Our practice is though to list those out on that midpoint meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, for public comment, just to raise that to the public.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And then also if the committee, if the committee went and molded over and had some questions.
Okay.
I I just want to say is, as someone reading through these, and if you haven't done so, I encourage you to do so. The fact that, um, that you you guys went through and included which parts actually came from the MAS C policies and the like, it's it's very helpful for the reader. Because that's to say that like, look, a a lot of these policies, we're not just pulling these out of whole club. This is what other districts are talking about. This is what the state's recommending and this is what, um, you know, other governmental bodies are suggesting that we as a district include and aspire to. So, um, you know, great work. Look forward to seeing the comments.
Great. And is there a second, um, procedure tonight? Like, do we don't vote to put them to public comment? It was just the waving of the first reading?
Waving the first, yeah.
Great. Any final thoughts?
I'll be expecting lots of feedback and that you'll all be studying hard for the next two weeks.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
So, um, in favor? Thank you very much.